Okay, there we go. All right, so now we're all set. So thanks again for coming to the Book Club this evening. We're on session two of six to study this book, The Great Path of Awakening by Jamgon Kontrul the Great. This is a teaching on what's called Lojong. And lo in Tibetan means mind and jang means training. And it's a teaching that comes back from the time of the Buddha about how to train ourselves to increase our capacity for love and acceptance for ourselves and how to train ourselves in acceptance and love for others. The Buddha in the sutras taught the power of love. In fact, in his text, the Dhammapada, he said, "Hate never once dispelled hate. Only love dispels hate." And so he described training in love and prescribed it like a physician would prescribe a medicine. He prescribed training in love as the ultimate antidote to hatred and difficulty as well as the antidote to selfishness and self-fixation, which the Buddha saw as being the root of this world of cyclic existence and suffering that he called samsara. So we have to train in love because love, even though a certain amount of love comes naturally, arises naturally in our being, that love right now is somewhat limited to the people we consider part of our sphere, our family, our friends, and so on. But we don't have equal compassion for those people who we consider to be close to us and equal compassion for those who are distant from us. So in other words, we don't have compassion for everyone. And so what we do in Lojong is we use our imagination to train and expand our capacity. And eventually, we can use love to begin to dissolve the artificial barriers that we place between ourselves and others in this world and can actually attain deep states of meditation as well as what is called enlightenment or awakening. The Buddha said that love could be the vehicle for people to attain awakening. And if people train completely in love and compassion, they can actually achieve Buddhahood. And this was something that was mentioned by my teacher, Khenpo Kartharimche, also. When he first told me that I could teach on the seven-point mind training, he said, "Make sure you tell everyone that they can attain complete and full awakening just from practicing love and compassion." So in this way, the teaching on Lojong is something that we can use to become better human beings and perhaps even become Buddhas. Now, in the earliest teachings of the Buddha, he taught the practice of metta, M-E-T-T-A, metta. And this is loving kindness. And he taught us to sit in meditation and mentally use our imagination to expand love and send love and compassion to all beings. And then, a number of centuries after the life of the Buddha, the great Indian saint Shanti Deva taught the exchanging of oneself for others as a method of meditation. In his book, The Guide to the Bodhisattva's Way of Life, he says, "If a person wishes shelter quickly from the sufferings of samsara for himself and for all others, they should practice the sacred mystery of exchanging oneself for others." And in the practice of exchanging oneself for others, we take that imaginary sending of love a little farther through the practice that is known as tong len. T-O-N-G-L-E-N, tong len. Through the practice of tong len, tong means to send and len means to take. Through the practice of tong len or sending and receiving, we take that imagined love and compassion just a little farther and imagine that we send love to all sentient beings and also remove from them all of their sufferings. And in the land of Tibet, when Buddhism came to Tibet, an Indian master named Atisha, who himself had traveled all the way to the island of Sumatra to learn tong len practice and mind training practice from the master Serlenpa, he brought those teachings back to India and then went to Tibet to practice them in Tibet for the last 12 to 17 years of his life. So the book that we're studying, that's called The Great Path of Awakening, this book is actually based on a 12th-century text called The Seven Point Mind Training, which was written by one of the disciples of the disciples of the disciples of the great master Atisha. The master Chakwya Yeshe Dorje wrote a 59 stanza, actually 59 lines of teaching that became known as the 59 Mind Training slogans of the Seven Point Mind Training. And he sees and he imagines Lojong as a complete system. In other words, when you start the practice of Lojong, it's completely self-contained. You say your refuge prayers at the beginning, taking refuge in the Buddha as your teacher, the Dharma as your path, and the Sangha as your community. And then you supplicate all of the masters of the Lojong or mind-training lineage. And after supplicating them, you perform guru yoga, imagining that you dissolve the guru into yourself and that blesses you. And then you practice tong len or any of the other practices of Lojong. And at the conclusion, you dedicate your merit. So it's a full and complete system of practice that starts with the practice of tong len and then expands to fill all aspects of our life. Because what's important about this practice is that it is not just for something that you do when you're sitting in meditation on your meditation seat. It's something that you can do all through your life. It can actually be done at the grocery store. It can be done with your best friend. It can be done even with your worst enemy. This practice allows you to practice love and compassion in all situations. Now, this is why we are treating the Lojong practice during our six-week book study as a complete system. So that's why that when you signed up and you got the links to go to the Eventbrite site, we had a whole raft of handouts there, including a handout on how to do Lojong as a daily practice. And I also made small videos to go with them. So you'll be able to look at those as well. So in the Seven Point Mind Training system, last week, we studied all the way through to page 10, from the beginning to page 10. And I'd like to draw your attention back to page seven for a moment, to the seven points of mind training. The seven points all lead logically from one to another. The first of the seven points is the groundwork, which is instruction that supports your Dharma practice. The second of the seven points is the actual practice of training in bodhicitta. If you remember from last time, bodhi means awakening and chitta means mind. So the mind of awakening, bodhicitta, is what we're training in. And then the third of the seven points of mind training is transformation of adversity into the path of awakening. In fact, this is what makes this practice of Lojong unique in all of Buddhism. I have seen no other place in any of the Buddhist traditions that I've learned about that has a practice that shows you how to transform adversity into a path of awakening. And so, in fact, at the end of this book, Jamgon Kontrul says, "This Lojong lineage has a teaching that nobody else has, which is how to turn adversity into the path of awakening." And I guess you could say that these are person how to practice at the moment in time of death. The fifth of the points is the extent of proficiency in mind training. It's the measurement. How do you know if the practice is working or not? And it gives you hints for how you can judge your practice as to whether it's going well or going poorly. Number six is the commitments of mind training, which means sometimes they use the word precepts to describe this. And precepts means it has to do with your behavior as a Lojong practitioner. How does a Lojong practitioner behave? And then finally, seven is the guidelines of mind training. And so that's what we talked about last week. We got all the way up to page 10. Then today, we're going to start on page 10 and work forward to page 17. So we're going to try our best to cover as much as we can of the second point of mind training. And so I'm going to start with a brief Lojong practice. I'm going to recite a prayer in English, and it's the prayer of taking refuge. And then I'm going to walk us through the Lojong daily practice beginning of guru yoga. "From now until enlightenment, I take refuge in the Buddha, the Dharma, and the exalted Sangha. Through the merit of generosity and other good deeds, may I attain Buddhahood for the sake of all sentient beings." Now, I'm going to read from Jamgon Kontrul's description of the guru yoga. "First, at the beginning of every period of meditation, imagine your root guru is sitting on a lotus and moon seat above your head. His body is radiant and face happy and smiling as he regards all beings with non-referential compassion. In him, all of the root and lineage gurus are present. With intense respect and devotion, repeat the lineage prayer if you wish and in particular, the following prayer, a hundred or a thousand times." Well, we're only going to do it three times tonight. "I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. Then imagine that your guru descends through the aperture of Brahma at the top of your head and sits in your heart in a pavilion of light." So we'll sit quietly and imagine that the guru has descended into our hearts. Okay, so now I'd like to direct your attention to page 10 of the book, under the topic, The Actual Practice Training in Bodhicitta. The second point of the Seven Point Mind Training has two sections. The associated meditation on ultimate bodhicitta and the principal meditation on relative bodhicitta. If you remember, last time, we talked about Jamgon Kontrul's definition of ultimate and relative bodhicitta. He called relative bodhicitta, "Training in love and compassion." And ultimate bodhicitta as being able to rest evenly in a nondiscursive state free from conceptual elaboration. That's a little bit hard to imagine right now. But I'm going to spend the next few minutes describing what he's talking about with those lines. Resting evenly in a nondiscursive state free from conceptual elaborations. It sounds like almost more than a person can imagine. Well, what it refers to is a four-part meditation on ultimate bodhicitta that begins this text. Now, usually when I teach this to students, what I do is I just describe this four-part meditation on mind. I just describe it. And I don't have people attempt to do it because it is a little bit tricky. But I'm going to explain the meaning of these four slogans because when people study the slogans, they frequently make a mistake about these four slogans, taking them separately, one at a time, and thinking that they're not related to each other, where actually, these four slogans are four steps in a contemplation meditation that we can do sitting on our meditation seats. And I'll explain as we go through. The actual practice training in bodhicitta, the topic, ultimate bodhicitta, on page 10. He says, "This first section on ultimate bodhicitta is divided into two topics: the instruction for a period of meditation and what you do in post-meditation, meaning after you get up from your meditation seat. With respect to the first topic, after the practice of guru yoga described above, you should sit with your body straight and as you breathe in and out, count without disturbance 21 breaths over and over again. This exercise will render you a suitable vessel for meditation practice." Well, what he's talking about there is the practice of shamatha, breath awareness shamatha that most of us practice. When we do shamatha, we just allow our breath to come and go naturally and follow our breath going in and out with our mind's attention. And as we follow the breath with our mind's attention, sometimes what will happen is that we'll be distracted by a thought. Perhaps it'll be a thought of yesterday or a thought of tomorrow. And the technique to practice when that happens, one of my teachers called it touch and let go. We touch the distraction lightly with our attention. We can even label it thinking and we can let go of it and then return our attention to the breath for a fresh start. So that what we get is a short period of attention followed by a period of mental wandering that we then notice, let go of, and return to the breath as our object of meditation. And so Jamgon Kontrul says that first, you should do the guru yoga that we just described and then do some of this quiet shamatha practice. Now, I've talked to a lot of people who have trouble with quiet meditation. So what I've been telling people who have trouble with quiet meditation is that they can also meditate on mantra and they can recite a mantra, such as the compassion mantra, om mani padme hum. Instead of doing breath-awareness shamatha, they can think of om mani padme hum or they can even chant it out loud. And then it gives you four steps to a practice. Step one, it says, "Look at all experience as a dream." So that's step one. The first step is to contemplate. Now, contemplation is different from meditation. Remember, in meditation, we're letting go of those thoughts. In contemplation, we're cultivating specific thoughts that will help us as we are working through an idea. So contemplation, we think about something until we reach an understanding of it. And then after that, we rest in what we have discovered or understood. And so that's a little bit about how contemplation is different from meditation. And you'll see what I'm talking about as we go through these four steps. It says, "Look at all experiences as a dream." It's not that it literally is a dream, but it has some similarities. The explanation that Jamgon Kontrul gives is this. "What we experience," he said, "that is the world and its inhabitants are objects that we grasp at with our senses. These appearances are simply our mind's manifestations of confusion. In the end, they are not actually existent in any way whatsoever, but are like the appearances in a dream. By thinking along these lines, train yourself to have some feeling for looking at the world in this way." Well, we came here to train in bodhicitta, but this is a little confusing. So what he's saying essentially is is that you can actually consider the world around you and you can think about the objects, the trees, the windows, the tables. And you can think, hmm, I'm experiencing these windows, tables, and trees. I'm experiencing them with my mind. My eyes take in the information, ears take in the information, nose, mouth, skin takes in the information, but it's actually the mind that experiences everything. The eyes can't think. The nose can't think. The tongue can't think. And so the mind is how we experience all of these impressions. And so if you looked at the room you were in right now and closed your eyes and then imagined that room, you could get a pretty good picture of it. And you would know the picture in your mind of that room is in your mind. But when you open your eyes, it's actually also appearing in your mind. And that's a little bit, shall we say, mind-expanding to think about that. So it's not literally that the way we experience things is a dream. It's not that this world is a dream, but that all of it appears in our mind, just like when we go to sleep at night. Our mind sees all kinds of pictures and those are actually happening in our mind. And so Jamgon Kontrul indicates how difficult this is by saying in that last sentence, "By thinking along these lines, train yourself to have some feeling for looking at the world in this way." So he's letting you know that it's not going to be easy, but he asks you to sort of entertain the notion that what you experience is experienced with your mind. And then, so that's step one. Step two, he says, "Examine the nature of unborn awareness." In other words, he's saying, "Okay, now that you've determined that what you're experiencing is being experienced with your mind, what's the mind?" And then it asks you. "When you look directly at the presence of your mind, no color, no shape, no form is perceived." In other words, in other words, mind is not made of matter. Your mind isn't made of atoms or molecules or any of those kinds of things. So when you look and ask yourself, "What color is my mind?" and you actually look at it, you're not going to see a color. And so what you would do is look for it and then not find it and then rest in the not finding of a color. This is how these meditations proceed, one step, two step, three step. So it says, "Mind has no color. Mind has no shape. It's not square, round, or rectangle. There's no form. It's not a liquid gas or a solid. And it doesn't have a beginning. You can't find it. Doesn't have an ending. Can't find that either." And now you might get stuck on the location. You might say, "Well, it's in my brain or it's in my heart." But these are descriptors that somebody told us. So we're asked to actually look and see if we find its location. And if we look for the location, it might actually, we might see nothing, no specific location for it. It's not something somebody told you. You have to look. And so then he says, "By examining and investigating mind, you should come to a precise and certain understanding of the nature of this awareness which has no origin, location, or cessation." Well, for the majority of us, this is kind of a theoretical exercise. But the reason I'm explaining it is not because I want everybody to go and sit and try and practice it. I just want everybody to understand that these slogans are not separate slogans to study separately. They actually are four parts of a progressive step-by-step-by-step-by-step meditation. So I just need you to understand that they are practiced in this way. And so then he says, "You might actually start thinking about this. You might think, 'Mind and body are all empty. Nothing is helpful or harmful in emptiness.'" If this happens, then the fourth slogan, "Let even the remedy release naturally." That means, once you've found it, stop thinking. Once you have made the discovery that mind has no color, no shape, no location, no beginning, no end, just stop examining and let yourself rest. And so then that takes us to the... That was the third slogan, pardon me, not the fourth. And the fourth slogan is on page 12. "The essence of the path rests in the basis of all experience." And so this actually tells you what this rest should be like. And then he says, "When there's no involvement in the activity of the seven groups of consciousness..." In other words, remember those five senses we were talking about? When you're not involved with the five senses and you're not involved with thinking and you're not even involved with your self-concept, your mind doesn't disappear. It actually continues to manifest. It's still there. And he said that that mind, which is still there, is the nature of all phenomena, the natural state, which is the basis of all of our experience. It is pointed out by the term, noble Buddha nature. And then he tells you, "Just let go and rest without any idea of a nature existing as something, meaning it's not a solid thing, with no mental clinging in a state distinguished by nondiscursive clarity and pure simplicity. In summary, for as long as you are able, one second, two seconds, three seconds, follow no train of thought but rest evenly in a state in which the mind in itself is clear and free of discursiveness." This is placing meditation. Then complete the period of practice with the seven branch prayer at the end of it as you would before. Then he says, so that's like one session of Lojong practice, the refuge, the guru yoga, and then an examination of the mind. I'm not actually recommending that people do this practice because it really is very difficult to try to pin down. But I did want to explain it because to skip over it didn't seem exactly fair. So I wanted to at least explain it so that you would have a sense of that these four slogans are part of a meditation on the mind. So you wouldn't try to study them separately and then try to figure out what they meant. So in any case, I'm going to stop here for a second and see what types of questions. I see we have a question in chat. Let's see. Yeah, I see. Let me answer Chris Coates' question. He says, "It's difficult for Westerners to think of mind as not being the brain." Yeah, you know, I think this is... That's what's so interesting about this exercise. It's not asking you to intellectually figure out where the mind begins. In fact, it's like anti-intellectual. It's telling you to look at your experience of mind right now and ask yourself, "Where is it?" And you really, if you do that, you won't be able to find it. And so since it's experientially based, you won't find a location for it. In fact, if you think about it when you touch your head, your thoughts go there. When you touch your arm, your mind goes there. When you touch your toes, and actually, you can think around a corner. So it's not a specific kind of intellectual exercise. It's like an anti-intellectual exercise. It's based and rooted in experience. So I'm sorry, but I will tell you one thing that Trungpa Rinpoche said when he was asked about this. He said, "Look," he said, "even a corpse has a brain, but it doesn't have a mind," which I thought was really interesting. Okay, and before I get to Tanya's question, Bill, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I wasn't sure I could articulate this well typing it in the chat. So thank you, Lom Macathay. So you blew my mind a little bit a couple of steps ago.
Yeah, sorry about that. I mean, I had to explain what the four... I had to really explain that it was like a four-part meditation because so many books treat these four things as though they're like separate things and you can shuffle them up and read them in any order and they're fine, you know? Go ahead.
So when you kind of gave us this example of, you know, "Look at the room around us and close our eyes and we can imagine the room in our mind. And then we open our eyes and we look at the room again, but looking at the room with our eyes open is not fundamentally different because that's in our mind. The experience of the room with our eyes open is another mental experience as it is with our eyes closed imagining the room." And then, so when we move on to the next step of looking at the mind, it's like recursive loop or something. It's appearing to itself and that just seems like almost sort of a wormhole. And is that where we kind of let the remedy release? And is that, is that where we kind of let the remedy release?
Yeah, that's exactly it, you, yeah. It, it strikes me that at that point you get into an intel, anytime you start adding dualism in an intellectual material, if you find yourself adding intellectual material to it, then you got a problem.
Thank you.
Because then it's taking it away from the experiential. This is actually meant to be extremely brief. You, you don't sit and do this for hours, you sit and do it for minutes. You know, I mean, it doesn't take very long to look at these things and say, there's no color, there's no shape. And then you just rest, that's the, that's the instruction, it's just, just rest. And, and then when that's finished, you dedicate the merit. I mean, it's, it's like, you may, it's insanely simple from the standpoint that you don't have to try to get anywhere because it's no, it's not intellectual. And if you find yourself giving yourself intellectual answers, somebody in the chat asks, well, why am I not asking everybody to do this meditation? It's because a lot of people who try to do the meditation get turned around and get really confused by it. But I feel it's unfair to study the book without at least explaining what the four slogans are for and that you don't, you don't study them, you know, separately from each other. And that's why I don't encourage people to do this because I tried to do this, kind of like, I read, I read it and I tried it. And I went to Khenpo Carthar Rinpoche and I said, Rinpoche, I'm having some problems. And I described my meditation, it was all mixed up. And he said, you know, I think you really need to stop doing this right now. Because he didn't want me to develop funny ideas, incorrect ideas, or make mistakes in my meditation. So it's better to hold off on doing it until you can do it with somebody working with you directly, one-on-one. That, that would probably work out better. Unless of course, you've already taken a lot of Mahamudra training, in which case this, this is already familiar to you. Anybody, I think there's a couple of people on this, on this class who have heard Khenpo Carthar Rinpoche or Trungpa Rinpoche teach on the book, Naturally Liberating Whatever You Meet by Khenpo Gangshar. The first half of the book is devoted to, the, the first part of the book is devoted to the teachings on karma. The next part of the book is called the analytical meditation of a pundit or scholar. And then the third part is the resting meditation of a kusalu or, or wanderer. And, and this actually, Khenpo Rinpoche said this four-part meditation is exactly the same as the analytical meditation of a pundit that's in Naturally Liberating Whatever You Meet. So anyway, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a geeky thing for people who are into geeky things. No problem. Is this a kind of vipassana? Yes, I, I do actually think that it is a form of vipassana, but it's not, because it's, because we're looking at the mind and taking the mind as the object of meditation. So I would say that yes, it's a form of that. But you can see the differences between the technology or the technique of this type of meditation and the technology of other types of vipassana. The Theravadin vipassana and the Tibetan vipassana and the Zen vipassana are all very different. They use different nomenclatures, they use different techniques, but the result is, and the result is, you know, kind of true to what our need is, so. Any other questions? Okay, okay. Well, yeah, so I'm, I'm sorry to, to go to lengths to explain ultimate Bodhicitta meditation to you and then say, I don't recommend doing it. But I think part of the reason for this is because I'm, I'm concerned about any kind of misapprehension that people might get. So, so that's, that's the reason. But the last part, this last, this fifth slogan, which is what you do when you're not meditating, I will encourage everybody to do that. It says, in daily life, at the bottom of page 12, it says, in daily life, be a child of illusion. After meditate, after meditation, do not allow the experience of resting evenly to dissipate, no matter what form of activity you engage in. Continually foster, so that means it's artificial. Continually foster the feeling of knowing that all appearances are, are, are non, you know, they're, they're not solid. All of the appearances that appear in your mind are not solid, but yet they appear. So be like a child of illusion. So in that way, you can walk through your day. Khenpo Carthar Rinpoche even recommended this exercise, so this is something everybody can do. And he said, just go through your day and remark to yourself from time to time, hmm, my experience of this is just like my, just like my dream last night. It's the same, wow, it's just like last night's dream. And he said, another thing you can do is when you have a, a mental affliction arise, like you feel sad or you feel in, like angry or impatient. He said, ask yourself a question and the question is, who's feeling that exactly? Where's the, where's the mind that's feeling that? Who's feeling that? And then try and go look for it. He says, you won't find it. He says, I guarantee you won't find it. So, so these are two things that he actually, he gave this teaching on looking for the person who's feeling something, where, where's the mind that's thinking that? He told us that way back when, it was like one of his first visits to Columbus. He said, try it, see what happens. I was like, okay. So, so that's a little bit about ultimate Bodhicitta. And now you can see why it's called the associated practice of Bodhicitta. It's not the main practice. The main practice is love and compassion, which comes next. And so, and so the, the very next section of the book is on relative Bodhicitta and that starts on page 13. He says, second, meditation on relative Bodhicitta is explained in three parts. The preparation, the actual practice and post-meditation. The preparation, he says the same thing. First, do the preliminary practice of guru yoga as it was described above. So once again, he tells you to start your session of Lojong practice, you know, with receiving, you know, supplicating your guru above your head, imagining that your guru descends into your heart. And then, and then he says, you should meditate on love and compassion. They form the basis for sending and taking. So basically what he has you do, Jang and Khatral has you do a preparatory contemplation. He has you think. He says, think about somebody who has given you and shown you unconditional love. Now this could be your mother, your father, your aunt, your sister, a mentor, someone in your life who has shown you unconditional love. And so you think about that person. And so this is not, we're not doing sending and taking here. We're just actually doing a preliminary contemplation about somebody who has shown us love. And so we think about that person, we think about their qualities, we think about how they've cared for us. And then we think, well, you know, in spite of all this caring that this person has shown for me, they're kind of stuck like I am, right here in samsara and they're suffering. This person is suffering in this cyclic existence of samsara. And so he says at some point, he says at some point, he says, train, how does he put it? He says, train in the wish to release them from, from the suffering of samsara. He says, train, and this, this is on page 14, about halfway down the page. He says, train in this way until the feeling of compassion is intolerably intense. And so in other words, he, he asks you to think deeply about someone who's given you love and how they suffer and how you wish you could remove their suffering. And then he has you think about how everyone is stuck in samsara in the same way. And he asks you to also think about them and make the aspiration that they are free from suffering. And then, and only then, is it time to imagine that you're giving them love. So you see, it's the, the, the whole practice of Tonglen in this way has a preparation and then the actual practice of doing sending and taking. And so he says that on, he says, the slogan says, train in taking and sending alternatively. Put them on your breath. And so he says, you can use your breath as the medium of this. And as you breathe out, you can think that you're sending them happiness and goodness. And then as you breathe in, you can think that you're removing from them all of their suffering and difficulty. In Khenpo Carthar Rinpoche's book, Dharma Paths, he says that when this suffering touches you, they're suffering that, from these other beings that you've imagined, you're using your imagination here. It's imaginary happiness going out to them and it's imaginary suffering coming to you. He says, the moment that imaginary suffering enters you, he says, you think that it meets the pure Bodhisattva Rinpoche's instructions on Tonglen. In, in his book, Dharma Paths, he says that you should really only do Tonglen for a short period of time. He doesn't give an exact number of minutes that you should be doing Tonglen. But what I tell, and he put it at 21. And I asked him, why did you put it at 21? He said, because, he said, that's a good number for meditation. And so that's how I've used it. In breath, out breath, I move a bead. In breath, out breath, I move a bead. In breath, out breath, I move a bead. And this is about two or three minutes of Tonglen, right there. And then after you conclude doing that short practice of Tonglen in Khenpo Carthar Rinpoche's instruction, he says, just let go of the visualization. You don't have to like dissolve it into emptiness or anything like that. He said, you just let go of it, just let go of the, of the visualization and allow your mind just to rest quietly in a place where there's no you, no them, no act of saving. Just rest your mind. And he said, this will only last for a few seconds, just a few seconds. And then your usual discursive mind will start up again. And after your usual discursive mind starts up again, then you can dedicate your merit using the seven branch prayer as is described in the book. So that's a little bit, a little bit about how to do the practice of Tonglen. Starting with the guru yoga and then a little bit of shamatha, quiet sitting. Or if you like to do mantra, you can do mantra instead. And then you can think about and contemplate the person that, who has shown you caring. And, and then you can think about all sentient beings suffering. And then you can think about wishing to remove their suffering and breathing out and giving them happiness, breathing in and removing their suffering, that it dissolves into nothing and disappears and so on. And so that's a little bit about, yeah, it's, the idea is that if we think about the sufferings of samsara, it, it can, it can touch us because we ourselves have been through a lot. We ourselves, ourselves have been through some suffering. And so even if we can't think about suffering very well. So if anybody has questions about Tonglen, you can ask them here. Either by raising a hand or, because I may not see all the hand raises, but, and, but you can also type it into chat or just use your audio on mute to ask the question. Is there a point about taking and sending starting with oneself? Yes, that's one of the post-meditation slogans and we'll get to that in a minute. See what other questions we might have. But I will answer that one, but I will, yeah, I will get to it. Any other questions? So I guess that means it's time to do some practice of Tonglen then, okay. To make it go quickly, since we have no questions, that means it's time to practice. So I think what we can do is since we've already done the little guru yoga, I'm going to read to you Rinpoche's description of how to do Tonglen. And, and then, and then we can practice it together. Maybe there'll, maybe there'll be some questions then. Okay, all right. He says, so first, start by sitting comfortably and become aware of your breath coming in and going out. Here's Khenpo Rinpoche's instruction. He says, breathe normally, following the natural course of your breath. Imagine that with the exhalation of your breath, whatever merit you have accumulated from beginning this time are accumulating now and will accumulate in all future time, radiates out toward all sentient beings. Just as when the sun shines, the rays of light radiate toward all places. So with your exhalation, these positive qualities radiate, bringing happiness, well-being, comfort, health and longevity to all beings without discrimination. Then, when you breathe in, imagine you are breathing in all of the suffering, confusion, turmoil and conflict of sentient beings. All the suffering and turmoil of sentient beings merges with you and this uproots the suffering and confusion of sentient beings. Because of the strength of Bodhicitta, the power of your sincere attitude of wanting to benefit beings, as soon as the suffering merges with you, it dissolves into nothing and disappears. It is just as if you had collected some dust together into a little pile and a strong wind blew it away. Breathing in and breathing out in this way, meditate for a short time. We'll do that. Think that as your breath goes out, like the sunshine, it goes out and touches all sentient beings and gives them goodness. As you breathe in, think that you remove from them all that is difficult and painful. That the suffering and pain comes to you, that it dissolves into nothing and disappears. Continuing reading Rinpoche's instructions. After you have meditated in this way for a short while, let go of the mental focus and let your mind rest in a state of awareness. Attempt to have the sense that there are no sentient beings to meditate upon, there is no person meditating and there is no act of meditation taking place. Try to transcend these three, which are relative, and give birth to something ultimate, something effortless and spontaneous, like the arising and disappearing of clouds in the sky. Just remain in a state of clarity. There is no act, no thought of doing something outside or inside. No you doing something. Just let go of all of that and remain in a state of awareness. Okay, that's a short session of Tonglen meditation. As this is the, the main practice of, of the Lojong, believe it or not, this is the main on-the-cushion practice of the entirety of Lojong. Everything else we're going to learn from now on in this, in this course, the remaining classes that we're going to have are going to be about how to apply this in our everyday life. And, and so I'm going to take a moment to look at the questions, there are two questions. It says, is this a complete practice that you practice it from front to back? What I am thinking is that each step of this teaching is a form of meditation in and of itself. For example, guru yoga, Tonglen and the, and that ultimate Bodhicitta practice. And yes, you could, you could practice them one at a time. You could do just the guru yoga, if that's all you have time for and then dedicate your merit, you could do that. You could do a more extended practice where you do the guru yoga, you do a little bit of quiet sitting, then you do, if you have training and permission to do the four-part meditation on mind. And, and then you could dedicate your merit if that's all the time you have. Or if you have the time to do it all, it'd be guru yoga, a little quiet sitting, a little of the four-part meditation and then a little Tonglen to, and then dedicate the merit. So you could make this practice five minutes long if you just wanted to do the guru yoga and rest a bit. But if you wanted it to be longer, you could make it 10 minutes or even 15 minutes. And if you really like Tonglen, you can repeat that short cycle of Tonglen that Khenpo Rinpoche described where you, where you do the, the, the breathing out of goodness. that Rinpoche described where you do the breathing out of goodness to others and the breathing in and removing their suffering. If you do that and then rest your mind in itself, dedicate your merit and then do the whole thing again. You can also do it the other way. So I don't know if that answered your question, Tom, but appreciate, yeah, okay, that did it, okay, good. Then someone's asking a really, really good question that is going to be connected to the next part. So I'm going to get to that. The question is, "Although difficult emotions can be problematic, they also serve a purpose according to many psychological traditions. What do Buddhists say about this?" I can't wait to get to this because it's the very next slogan. And it's going to be, it's one of my favorite things to talk about. So let's see if there are any other questions about the practice of Tonglen first. Any other practice related, Tonglen practice? I'm so glad that we do this together, so thank you. I mean, just really thank you. Because learning to do this practice was super meaningful to me.
I have a question.
Yes.
Lama Kathy.
Yes.
Okay, so you were going just now through the stages. And you mentioned at one point, then you said, "If you have permission, you can go to these next four, the fourfold stages." What were those?
Sure, yeah, and that's the Ultimate Bodhicitta Meditation.
Okay.
The four slogans that have to do with Ultimate Bodhicitta. I think it would be, you know, good if you wanted to practice those, you can send email to me and I can walk you through it. But, you know, but otherwise I kind of recommend bypassing it for now because, again, because of the pitfalls that I fell into. It's not that you will all fall into the same pitfalls that I fell into when I tried to practice it without supervision. But it's really way better if you can do it with supervision. So I'm willing to offer that to people. So we'll just, you know, we'll figure out how to do that individually. So that's what. Other questions on audio? Anybody have questions on audio? Okay, then the next thing, there are two more slogans in this section. And the slogans tell you, "Three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue." Actually, there's three more slogans, I'm sorry. The second one is, "Use reminders in everything you do." And then the last one is, "Begin the sequence of taking with you." The one on, my favorite one is the first one, which is, "Three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue." And here's what Jamgon Khentrul says. "The three poisons continually arise in connection with three objects. Compulsive attachment arises for objects that we see as being pleasant or useful. Aversion arises for objects that are unpleasant or harmful and stupidity or indifference for other objects." Then, so he's basically talking about our everyday life. Always from the minute we wake up until the minute we go to sleep and possibly every second in between, we're being attracted by some things, repelled by some things, or feeling different toward things. So there's three basic responses we could have to anything we experience. And so then he says, "Recognize these poisons as soon as they arise." Well, so he says, "Once you recognize that what you're experiencing," he said, "Then when attachment arises, for example, think like this." And then Jamgon Khentrul is kind of famous for writing little scripts of things that he wants you to think about. And so I tell people, "If you really want to use this script, just Xerox it, cut it out, you know, cut it, Xerox it, laminate it and carry it in your pocket and read it a couple of times a day, whether you need it or not, because then it'll come in handy for you when you need it." So here is what he's saying. "May every bit of every sentient being's attachment be contained in this attachment of mine. May all sentient beings see the virtue of being free from attachment. May this attachment of mine contain all their disturbing emotions and until they attain Buddhahood, may they be free of such disturbing emotions." Then he says, "Aversion in other emotions and other emotions are used in practice by working with them the same way. Thus, the three poisons become three limitless seeds of virtue." So it's not that there are three poisons, attachment, aversion, and ignorance. And then there are three seeds of virtue that have names like, I don't know, Mary, Ted, and, you know, and charity or whatever, you know. It's not that these three poisons become three other things. It's just when we recognize what we are feeling and engage with what we are feeling and turn that engagement into a virtuous engagement, where we are engaging with them in order to turn them into an aspiration for Buddhahood. We take a negative thing and then we work with it and then we turn it into something positive. That's what it means when it says, "Three seeds of virtue." So it means that even our worst things, the worst emotions that we feel can actually gradually be turned into something. Or maybe even when we feel something that's a positive something. It's sometimes very intense and it's very hard to be there with it. So we tend to run away from the feeling. And when we run away from the feeling, we can run away to one of two extremes. One extreme is the extreme of trying to suppress our emotions and push them down. And the other extreme is to blindly express the emotion, you know, kicking the wall or doing something else that's kind of unhealthy. And so these two extremes, either blind expression or blind suppression of emotion, neither of them are working with the emotion itself. It's all activity of reacting and running away. So what is different about this approach is that it's asking us to be there with the feeling and then to engage the feeling instead of running away from it and engage it with Dharma. In other words, we have a chat with our feelings and we ask our feelings to help us practice some Dharma. So when we're feeling angry, we say, "Okay, I'm feeling angry," and we identify it. And then when we identify it, we say, "This feeling of anger has never really helped me solve a problem." So rather than give free rein to this negative emotion and kick the wall or whatever, or yell at someone or be mean, or instead of pretending that we can stuff that anger down in a hole and it'll disappear. But you and I both know that when you put something under a lot of pressure, it eventually explodes. I'm just, you know, speaking from my own experience on this. So we say, "Instead of doing what I usually do with this, running away to these two extremes, I'm going to actually engage this remedy. And I'm going to say, even if it's through gritted teeth, 'May every bit of every sentient being's negative emotion be contained in this negative emotion of mine. May I and all sentient beings be free of this negative emotion. And may this negative emotion of mine contain all of their disturbing emotions. And until they attain, until we all attain Buddhahood, may we all be free of this negative emotion." So even if we don't entirely believe in it, we don't entirely, if we're not entirely there with it, if we can somehow create this aspiration, saying, "May all of my negative emotions be contained in this negative emotion and by my working through it, may I and all beings be free of it and may we all become Buddhists, which is the complete freedom from this." And so one of the handouts that you will find online is an explanation of an easy way to do this. And it gives an easy formula, a different restatement of this formula that might make it easy for you to use it. And I encourage everybody to repeat this formula, even if you don't need it on a daily basis, so that it's there when you need it. And because if you can, because how do human beings learn anything? We learn it through repetition. And that's how we learn every skill we've ever learned is through repetition of that skill. And so if we repeat the skill of working with a negative mental affliction, if we work with it, even if we fail to work with it and it gets the better of us, at least we will have engaged it and tried to do something different. Because this continuum of emotion is habitual. We run away and those two, and it's habitual. So now what we have to do is we have to find a different way to engage with our negative mental afflictions. And so that's the hope. And this slogan was the slogan that changed my life. Because until I was able to understand and practice this slogan, I always felt that it was bad to be mad and that I was just a hopeless case because I could just never get a hold of my anger. I could never get a hold of my bad feelings. I could never get a hold of anything. And once Rinpoche gave us this teaching, he gave us this teaching way back in the 1980s, from the minute he gave us this teaching, I took it and worked with it immediately. And I, you know, sometimes in a day, like 90% of your emotions will get away from you. But even if you just get one or two or three of the emotions and you can actually engage them this way, this is a really positive thing. So anyway, I don't know if anybody has questions about that. But, or, you know, question, comment, whatever. But I wanted to make sure that I got through that slogan today. I hope it will help you as much as it helped me. Because where we've been and how we got here, you know, where we've been in our lives and what brought us to, and what brought us into this book club was, you know, this is not like reading a mystery novel for the summer. This is like, we really need this because we all want to be better people. And how do we begin to make that change? We begin to make that change by having love for ourselves and appreciation for ourselves. And one of the ways, yeah, thank you. I saw that somebody asked about which handout was it and I appreciate Tom for putting that in chat. Thank you very much. And so anybody who can read chat, the handout for this has just been posted. Thank you. And anyhow, if this is something that you can try, try it. And then bring your experiences back to the book club and we'll talk with you about it. And we'll try our best to help you to practice this because it did, it literally changed my life. Because if you think about it, one of the things that makes us feel hopeless with our emotions is the fact that they're so powerful. And how do we begin to engage something that's so powerful? And at first, it seems like we're standing in the surf on the ocean, right? We're at the ocean and we're standing in the surf and we're continuously knocked over by the waves. But if we can stand up to at least one wave, we'll know that it's possible and we'll know that we can eventually get stronger and stronger and stronger so that we can take on larger and larger emotions. Because, believe it or not, we've already been through a lot or we wouldn't still be here. So we do have some staying power. Every person who is in this group knows that they have been through a lot, but they're still here and they still have Buddha nature and they are still going to work on bringing out their Buddha nature. And if we can use these techniques, it will come out. So that's something I want to share. Okay, question. It says, "It's interesting that this helps with what at first appear to be positive but very strong emotions." Yes, we can experience something as intensely wonderful, but soon we realize it can't last and yet can't leave it behind. Absolutely. Addressing emotions in this way can help us to level out a bit. Yeah, that's exactly right. In fact, the next slogan says, "Use reminders in everything you do." And my favorite reminder is not in the book, but I will find a way to put it online if I haven't already. It goes like this. Maybe I can type it into chat. No, I don't think I'll be able to, it's going to take too much time. It says, "When I am happy, when I am happy, may my merit flow to others. May its blessings fill the sky. When I am happy, may my merit flow to others. May its blessings fill the sky. When I am unhappy, may the sorrows of other beings be mine. May the ocean of suffering run dry." So the first part is, "When I am happy, may my merit flow to others. May its blessings fill the sky. When I am unhappy, may the sufferings of all beings be mine. May the sorrow, good feeling that I have now." You know how you feel when you come in and you come into a cool house after a hot day? You say, "May all beings have this kind of happiness. May all beings be happy like this." And then when you're feeling just really delightful on a good day, you say, "May all beings have this feeling. And may no person feel like this, even if that's all you can do. May no person suffer like this ever again, even if that's all you can do when you're feeling low. May I and all beings be totally free from this. May nobody suffer like this." That's another thing you can do. Thank you, Laura. She typed it out. Yes. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so, yes, that's the very next slogan. It gives a lot of different sayings that you can use, but my favorite one really is that one. "When I'm happy, may my merit flow to others. May its blessings fill the sky. When I am unhappy, may the sorrow of others be mine. May the ocean of suffering run dry." I just think it's a marvelous thing to do because that way we're always thinking about others. Another thing you can do to do this is you can think, "May everything I do today benefit beings in some way and may we all come to Buddhahood." And I try to put that on my mind every morning when I wake up. And it doesn't always take until after I've had my tea, okay? Sometimes I don't have that thought until after I've had my tea. But I try to always think, "May everything I do today benefit beings in some way." I mean, you know, because even when I'm a goof up, even when I goof everything up, it's such a waste of my time. I hate waiting in line. Instead of doing that, being have to go through suffering like this or, you know, or like, "May I benefit everybody who's waiting in line with me. May all of us become Buddhists in the future." I mean, you can do stuff like that. I mean, why not? I mean, it's our mind and we are conditioning it every second of every day. We're conditioning it. I mean, we condition our hair, right? We condition our skin and we're conditioning our mind. And so this is encouraging us to use the training of the mind. And then the last slogan in this section is, "Begin the sequence of taking with you." And this is on page 17. And it says, "In order to be able to take on the sufferings of others, begin the sequence of taking with yourself. Right now, take on mentally all the suffering that will ripen for you in the future." Spoiler alert, there's more coming. Just, you know, you know. I'm sorry, you know. Right now, I mean, we don't like to think about that, but it's absolutely true because we were other people in other lifetimes. And some of those other people we were, they weren't so good. Okay, they just weren't so good. I mean, we're great, right? But you know what I'm saying. And so some of that karma is still coming. And so if we can use these techniques, then it won't matter how much is coming at us, that we'll be able to work with it. So there you go. And then it says, "When that has been cleared away, take up the sufferings of others." I have read that slogan several different ways. One of the ways you can read that slogan is to think, is to think that when you're doing Tonglen, if you're feeling like really worn down by life, if you're really just feeling really just feeling worn out, you can actually imagine that you are in front of you among the group of people that you're doing Tonglen for. You can breathe out and send yourself goodness. You can breathe out and send yourself healing. You can breathe in and remove all of your suffering, as though you were your own older sibling, saying, "Give me that, I'll take that for you." So in this way, we can be in our own corner, and we can take care of ourselves, we can be the older sibling we never had, because we can say, "I'll take that," and then give ourselves back goodness. And even if we have to think of ourselves as being ourselves 10 minutes in the future, that's what Lama Sutram Yeshe says, which I think is brilliant. He says, you know, "You can do Tonglen for the you who's going to be there in 10 minutes," which I think is kind of brilliant. And it says, "Is there a visualization to help with the slogan?" Oh, of sending and doing, sending and taking for yourself? I think that's really the way you can apply it, is to think that you're among the people who you're doing Tonglen for. Because remember, Kemper Rinpoche says you should do it for all sentient beings. You should leave nobody out. And you know who that, know what that means. That means you've got to put people in there you don't like. It's okay. You can hide them behind other people that you do like, and then, you know, so that it's a little painless. But I would actually put the people you don't like in there, and, you know, even if they're like way, way in the back, but eventually, Kemper Rinpoche, enough said, you get it. Okay. So that is, that's what our main practice is in this practice. I see that I'm coming down to my last five minutes here, so I better wrap up. But that's the main practice of the seven points of mind training. The first point is the preliminaries, which teach the foundation. That's your Guru Yoga and your Four Thoughts that turn the mind toward Dharma. The second of the seven points of mind training is the main practice, which is doing sending and taking mainly, and practicing it as best we can when we're off the cushion. It says, "Do we practice the slogans situationally so that as related advanced thinking and feeling occurred?" Yeah, we're going to get to that. We will definitely be getting to the slogans in the third, fourth, fifth for us, so we can chat, but I, you know, but I know some people hate Facebook, so I'm trying to come up with a different idea. So if you've got other ideas, just let me know, what kind of a group, discussion group we could get going, and where, where we can facilitate such a discussion group, especially for people who don't like Facebook. So that is. So you'll have to, like, write to me and let me know if there's another place we can go that people will feel comfortable going. And tell me what they are. Let's see. Yeah, very good. I'm, yeah, okay, right, exactly. So yes, I'm sorry about that, Chaz, you're absolutely right. You've got to watch out. I can't thank you enough for your patience. You guys have all, cup and a string, I like that one too. I just really admire your patience and being able to listen to these talks about the seven-point mind training. And you can read ahead in the book, because we're going to be discussing, next time we're going to be discussing the third of the points, which is the transformation of adverse circumstances. Thank you for all the cute little things people are sending me pictures. This is lovely. And that's on page 17, and then work through to page 25. We're going to try to cover the whole thing. I don't know, I'm going to, but I really need to try and cover all point three. And so we'll work on that. In the meantime, I can't say enough about how great you guys are, and I'm going to dedicate some merit now for you and for everybody. Can you imagine, of all the book clubs this summer, this is the only one that's going to be directly attempting to accumulate merit? I'm just saying. It's special. It's really special. And thanks, by the way, to Chuja for being our host tonight, and, you know, host with the most. And I have no idea how I'm going to drag this thing off of this video that I have just put up on Facebook. I have no idea how I'm going to drag it down. If I've got any video nuts out there, write to me, and then we'll figure out how to pull that off of Facebook and put it onto YouTube, so we can have other people watch it. So let's gather together all of the goodness of this session, and we make the aspiration that all of this goodness is shared with all beings. And I'll recite the short dedication in English. "Through this merit, may all achieve the omniscience of Buddhahood. May it defeat our common enemy, wrongdoing. From the stirring waves of birth, old age, sickness, and death. From the ocean of samsara, may we free all beings. May we free all beings. May we free all beings." Okay, thank you. And if anybody has problems with Eventbrite or the registration, just write to me. I mean, it's a mess, because I don't understand it, but I'm going to continue to try and get it to work for everybody, so thank you. Okay? Okay. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, Lama Kathy.
Yeah, good night. I feel like, I feel like I'm on the Waltons. Good night, Mary Ellen.
Good night.
Night, John Boy.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Guys are amazing.
Woo!
That was great, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Guys, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, hey, I got, okay, see you later.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Hi, thanks, Lama Kathy.
You're welcome. Hey, thank you, it's great to see you. Oh, my gosh, all my friends are here. Okay. We're going to have to have like an extra meeting, and then like just, just like sit and drink fruit juice or something, and just like say, "Hey, how you doing?" Okay?
I got all my friends from Columbus there. I wanted to say hi to everybody. Janelle, I can't believe it, Tracy, all of you, Tanya, Nan, well, Kathy.
Hello, Charles.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to see you, Tanya and everyone.
Enjoy it.
Kathy Jackson, hey!
Good night, and thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, hey, Nancy, bye.
Okay, Nancy, bye-bye, everybody, take good care. Okay, so, okay, thank you, Facebook people, for watching. I, you know, it was kind of accidental, but I'm really happy you were here. So take good care of yourself and go out and benefit beings.